First order of business, salute to the flag. Okay. Approval of the minutes of our last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second it. All in favor? Department head, committee chair updates.
I put the fire chief first. Do we want to move him down?
Sure.
Okay, so I just have a couple of things to go over with you tonight. The first one is regarding the school election dates. Last week, we announced school election dates based on the correspondence that we had received from the school. After said announcement, apparently, the dates were changed. So, I have an email from someone as well verifying them. So, I guess they changed them to avoid April vacation, and we just had some miscommunication as far as notifying the clerk's office. So, to correct, the town meeting, the open town meeting at the school will be on April 5th, and then the election, when the polls are going to be open, it's going to be April 12th. So, we essentially just, they moved it up, looks like two weeks.
Numbers are two dates?
April 5th.
Yeah.
7 o'clock at the school, and April 12th here at the town hall, from 8 to 8.
The 12th.
Yes. So, the 5th and the 12th.
Okay. Very good.
Next thing that I have, I told you guys last week that May, Lance was coming from May Municipal. He came by to look at two of the buildings that we recently added to the insurance. He touched base with me afterwards. He met with road commissioner Dave Winchell, and one of the people at the fire department met with him as well. In regards to the fire department, and I did speak to Dave Langley about this, there were just two things that they wanted fixed. He said that there was a light near the exit bay door that was out, an exit light that was out, and the second floor railing, right where the platform is, he said that the railing was 36 inches, and it actually needs to be 42. So, he left a copy of the documents with them, and they'll see to getting it fixed. Santa Salt said he was very impressed with, the only thing, and he did tell me that he wasn't writing us up, if you will, but the only thing that he mentioned was that David was going to put a lock on the electrical box outside, which was his only recommendation with that building. So, that's impressive, and I'm certain that Dave will get us keys to that when he has a chance, and we'll store master here. And other than that, oh, the other thing with the fire department was, he was looking for a value of how much the stuff inside the ambulance building was valued at, not counting the Forrester truck and not counting the boat, because we already have those listed on our insurance. He said that there was miscellaneous medical supplies, some cleaning supplies, maybe, and he just needs an idea as far as inside, you know, miscellaneous items. So, I did mention that to Dave as well, but we need to have a number to give him. Oh, speaking of which, Dave. So, Dave is going to fix those two things, and he's going to get me an idea of the value inside the building, and we'll get that updated and-
Sure.
-good to go.
Sounds good.
Just recapping what May Municipal had to say.
Oh, yes. Yep, okay.
Yep, I told them about the sign, the exit sign, and the other one was just the railing on that part of the platform.
Yep.
And then the, just the value to the miscellaneous stuff inside your building.
Okay.
Is that the railing on the top of the platform, or the railing all the way up?
I'm not sure. He's going to send us a letter.
Yeah, I think he said he left something over there.
Yes, he, yeah.
What he said to me was the second floor, second floor platform.
Yeah, I think the handrail still has to be at 36, but I think the railing itself, being commercial, has to be 42.
And he said it was just that one spot.
I think it's the, yeah, that's easy enough to fix.
Okay.
And then, like I said, whenever you can get me a value, even, you know, just an estimate.
Okay. Yep, yep, I'll have, yep, we'll get that for you for the first of the week or something.
Okay.
Perfect. The last thing that I have, really just under me, is the street signs. If you recall, in December of 2014, we requested that the state do a speed survey. At a couple of selectmen's meetings, you guys authorized money out of a municipal management so that didn't affect the gentlemen's road lines. And the guy from DOT and deputy Shaw sat down and corresponded about their recommendations, because apparently, if a road's not posted at all, it's automatically either 40 or 45, and some of the roads you had concerns with, they wanted it lower. So, Dan and Tim basically sat down and had conversations about the roads and where they felt the signs should go, when, you know, some area's 25, some area's 35. So, anyways, those signs just came in. We're in the process now of splitting them up and figuring out who's on which side, and hopefully, the guys will be able to pick them up by next week and start working on them when the weather permits.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, we bounce back up to the top of the list here and bring the fire chief up? Come on up, Dave.
Dave, you're the fire chief.
Yeah, that'll be you.
What was the question, selectman?
Just, you had some information for us tonight, or?
Um, yes.
Kind of had you first on the agenda here.
Okay, I appreciate it. As we all know, in the last two weeks, we've taken over the, everything has gone through with the rescue, finalizing from, everything from the lawyer's paperwork to right to the state, everything's all taken care of on that there. I realize that usually any request for an article for the warrant is usually by the end of January, but we did not. Seeing it went into February, we kind of missed that timeline. So, I'm submitting a request tonight, and it reads to, I'll read it to you, it says to see if the town will vote to authorize the revenue generated by the ambulance to be placed into the Act and Fire Rescue Capital Improvement Plan. The benefits of being able to do that, there's, well, the rescue eventually is going to be making revenue and everything. So, our thought is to have that into a capital improvement plan, excuse me, so if, so all those funds would go back into that. So, we put it towards a new ambulance. Just throw this out as a figure, did some checking, just a base price, bottom line rescue right now is $225,000. So, as we get, as time goes on, we're able to put money into that. So, if the time ever comes that we need something there, or something terrible happens to one of the fire trucks or something like that, we have that money. So, I'm requesting that it be put onto, onto the warrant. I'll give you a copy of those.
And- I don't know if there's anything we can do this year. Ted was here briefly tonight. He had something he had to go take care of. We talked about it just for a couple seconds informally. I think as much as we'd like to try to put something on this year, like to try to maybe, if we just wait one year and see what the ambulance does bring in, it might give us some higher numbers next year to know what the ambulance will be making, and we can at that time put something on. I mean, we did close it, you know, as far as the warrants go, at the end of January. Granted, we didn't have, we didn't own an ambulance service then. So, but we're happy for you to, you know, give us that. We can bring it up again next week, just to get a formal vote on it. But what's your thoughts, Bill, on that?
Go on, but whatever you decide.
Yeah, I mean, I don't like the idea. I'd like to stop putting money away for an ambulance.
Well, that's, that's just it. I mean, if, you know, it's, as time goes on, and, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna be making money, is where we want to be.
Oh, yeah, definitely. What's your thoughts too on, right now, we have a capital improvement fund for fire trucks, and I think it just says, I don't think it says "fire truck."
Yep.
What if we change that to, say, emergency vehicles, and then next year, plug a little more money into that? Actually, the money that we get from the ambulance, the ambulance association, the money they're going to turn over, will be strictly earmarked for a ambulance.
That's correct.
Because that was the agreement in the very beginning.
Yep.
So, you know, that money will go in its own, it'll be designated anyway as its own, own amount of money. So, what do you think of the idea of changing that other line that we have to say "emergency vehicles" as opposed to "fire truck"? Just a thought. I mean, it would open it up to the fact that if, you know, if we did have to do something, we'd have some money already put away. That would, you know, that would be a strictly emergency basis, but, I don't know, it's just a, just a wild thought.
Yeah. No, I just, yeah, there's something for us to think about, changing that wording and everything there. But I just, to be honest with you, if, you know, so that rescue makes $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 in a year's time, I just hate to see it go into the general fund. I'd rather see it go back into, into-
Right.
Into the public safety aspect of it. And in that way, if we do have something that needs, you know, something happens that needs to be replaced, or something happens, we have that there. We wouldn't have to come back, you know, wouldn't have to come back and burden the townspeople for a special town meeting and everything. So, like I said, I know it's, you know, we kept getting, getting pushed out, pushed out because of issues that we kept coming upon, but it was something that, kind of had to put an article into something when we don't-
Oh, yeah.
We don't even have ownership of it. So, that's why.
Yeah.
I think it's something that we really need to sit down and look at it.
Oh, yeah. No, I definitely agree that it needs to, that we need to do that. I just, you know, our thoughts was is to maybe just wait the rest out, wait the rest of this year out, see where, what it does bring in, and it'll have some higher numbers to be able to say, okay, it made, you know, $50,000. We either take all the 50 and put it away, or we take 30, put it away, and put 20 towards the operating expenses of it, you know, just to see what it's going to do.
Yep. When you're talking about a year, you're talking about a fiscal year, or you're talking about a calendar year?
Next. Not this, not this June's town meeting, but the following June's town meeting. Just whatever it does in that, in that time period between now and, well, it'll be now to the end of next January, when we, when we close the warrants again.
All right. So, if we have a, if we can't get it on a warrant, and we don't come to an agreement, is there, well, we'll know what, what the numbers are, is there a way to keep those, I mean, it'll go into the general fund. Let's say a year from now, we end up doing, is there any way to reclaim that money that was?
Only a town floor. I mean, a town floor could say, yes, we want to set X amount of dollars aside. You know, that money will be going into the general fund right now, so it'll sit in the general fund. So, next-
So, let's say, let's say we do that. Let's say we, we let it ride for a year.
Yep.
The rescue makes, let's say the rescue makes $50,000 the first year. Could we go at the town meeting on the floor and take $50,000 out of the general fund and put it into a CIP program?
Well, you'd want to make it a warrant article prior to that.
That's what I'm saying, yes. So, we could, we could actually technically have two, two warrant articles.
You could.
That's-
Yep.
Yeah, and I just, I mean, I want to be careful, I guess, on a couple of things. I mean, the, as far as renaming it, if money is already in the account and it's allocated, you know, we really need to check with the treasurer and figure out how and what, you know, so-
That's why I didn't answer the question.
Any promises about renaming, certainly going forward, calling it, you know, the, calling it something new might be an idea. But you're right, I mean, the best way that it could happen, if it doesn't go on this year, is primarily to, you know, to set up a new warrant article. I mean, you can't, you know, there's no guarantee that you're going to, that money's going to come out of general government. It's just going to be a warrant article saying, basically, do you want to put X amount into a capital improvement fund? I mean, and are you going to be able to sell it better on town meeting, because you can say those are the revenues from last year, and we just didn't, possibly. But there's a lot of, you know, a lot of revenues that come in from a lot of departments, and that's what builds our general government. So, maybe even taking portions of it, you know, because we still need that revenue to offset everything else in town. You know, whether it be the excises I collect, or the revenues you collect, I mean, that's, that's what keeps our general government, you know, that's what builds our tax rate.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, and we've, you know, we've also put, what, 200, 450,000 roughly out this past year, you know, to put-
Yep.
-into this process.
Offset it.
You know, to get, to get it going. So, you know, by waiting just a, just another year, you know, we'll, like I say, we'll have some, some real numbers and know. I mean, right now, the ambulance is making, what, 99.9% of its calls?
Oh, yes.
About 100.
Yep.
You know, so I think, did they go to, I think it went to Shapley last night on a, on a mutual aid call. So, I mean, I'm very impressed with how this is, you know, how this is working since we started the whole process of, of putting the two departments together.
Yep.
You know, the private organization and the, and the fire department. The cooperation and the manpower and, you know, all the folks have bent over backwards to make sure we make the calls. So, you know, in which case, it's our job too, to make sure that we keep things moving forward on it as well.
Of course, yep.
So, but no, they're doing wonderful on that. I mean, it's, you know, at one point, it went from one year, a couple of years ago, it was only making like 65% of the calls.
That's correct.
And now, we're down near 100. That's phenomenal. I'll use PD's term, that's phenomenal.
It is.
It really is. I mean, it's great. So, you know, so I have no, you know, no problems. I don't think putting this on, you know, putting it off for a year, but, but then, we'll have the numbers. You could, you'll be able to tell the townsfolk, okay, we've run now for a year, or X amount of months, here's what we generated, we'd like to put X amount of dollars into a capital improvement fund to, yeah. I just think it makes sense, rather than just pulling a number out of the sky.
Yep.
And we'll also have whatever the ambulance passes forward, you know, and move that in there too, so.
Yeah, no, the potential's there for that, for, for the rescue to be self-sufficient.
Yeah.
And that, that's my goal is to, and that was our goal right along, is not have to, not have to come back and say, well, we had, we had a tough time, or we had, you know, something major has happened, we need to go to a special town meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, if something happens, it happens, and we'll have to deal with it, you know, from now till when we start putting money away. But hopefully, nothing will happen. How, how old is that ambulance now?
Probably most to 10 years if-
10 years.
If we want it used.
Right, right. So, anytime in the next two to five is going to be pushing it. Five's going to be pushing it, and two is more likely.
That's correct. That's correct. So, so that was, that was my request.
Okay.
And, and everything, and-
Yeah, I mean, I would love to say yes and put it on there, but, you know, I think we do need to.
And, and everything. So, okay, very good. So, anything else?
I don't have anything. Do you have anything, Bill?
Okay.
All right, very good. I'll, I'll give you a copy of these there.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Ed, you want me to put that on under Old Business for next week?
You can put it on under Old Business, yeah.
For a final, an actual vote?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Jen, we still three, four minutes?
Thank you, sir.
You just want one.
I would have put you on there if I knew you were coming.
If you have extras, we'll have a couple extras.
I would have put you on if I knew you were coming.
I'll take one. Yeah, actually, yeah, I'll give Bill one. I'll keep one, and we'll give one to Jennifer for the file. Okay. Yep, sounds good. To Jennifer, and we'll-
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If you ask questions.
Give that to Jennifer as well.
I'm very pleased that the rescue section is doing so well. My question to both chief as well as to the board of selectmen is, has anyone truly thought about the idea of offering subscriptions for ambulance service? Most governmental ambulance services in the towns that I've lived in have subscriptions where you and your family can pay $100 a year and then not be billed in case there is any need for use of the ambulance or something of that sort. I'm not sure where the town of 2,500, whether from a arithmetical point of view, it makes a lot of difference, but it certainly is a steady piece of income for these ambulance services every year, regardless of how many calls they do or do not make. And I was just wondering, has anyone thought about a subscription?
The ambulance, the ambulance association, I know in the past, has, had, had done a similar thing.
Okay.
I don't know whether, I'd have to look into the aspects, whether a town could do it legally.
They should be able to.
I would think.
County governments do it, I know.
Yep.
Yep, no, we, I'm trying to think, maybe years, when they first started out, I think they may have done something, but seeing it was a private organization, there was some, some legal word. I'm not quite sure. I remember Shapley used to do that, Jennifer, they may still do that.
They still do, yes.
But they, they fall underneath the town. Alfred, Alfred has done that for 30 years too. So, I think there is a possibility, something for us to look into, now that we, we fall underneath the municipality charter and everything, so.
I think it'd be a very nice thing.
Oh, yeah, sounds like a great idea.
A lot of people would be for $150 for the year, knowing that if an ambulance is ever needed, for whatever reason, that their, if their insurance doesn't cover it, then it's all taken care of.
Yeah. So, that's something we can, we can look in.
Yeah, that's definitely a great idea.
And everything, but there's, there's another-
Yeah, if Shapley does it, and Alfred does it, they're both municipal ambulance services, so.
Another good point. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Figured I'd come up and give an update tonight. I've got a few phone calls on the Milton Mills Road to have it patched. So, I made some phone calls in the North Berwick Town Bond. They said they're going to get on it, but everybody that I've talked to, either I've left a message back, or I've told them that it's in their hands at this time that I can't, can't be doing anything with it.
I'm not familiar with what the problem is, so.
You haven't driven the Milton Mills Road lately?
Nope.
Drive it. You'll figure it out pretty quick. From the daycare, Kyle Hurts, Mark Hurts, from there, just bowing up to Hannah Treadwells, then up through the rest, it's not too bad. Then you go down, down into Milton Mills, down by the cemetery, and stuff down by Richard Nass's. So, pretty bad. And people are calling, asking whether or not the stake can go put some sand in them, and this and that. And I'm just up here to say that I have made the phone call. They assured me that they're going to try to get some manpower together.
Because the state maintains that?
Yes, North Berwick, the North Berwick State Bond takes care of that, and does the road maintenance on it. And across the Alfred State Bond, Plow's 109, they kind of switch it around a little bit. So, it's a little confusing when you make the phone call, which one takes care of, and which one doesn't. But, but at this time, I made that phone call a week ago.
Okay.
So, but I haven't seen anything, so. But I just figured I'd get it out there on TV that the phone call has been made. Other than that, I can't do nothing to it.
Okay.
It's not my, my jurisdiction.
So, it's been a week since you made the phone call, so.
Yeah, I'll make another call.
Maybe just do a follow-up and see.
At some point, I don't know if, you know, myself and the selectmen could get together, possibly write a letter, you know, something to Scarborough. I've, I've talked to state, people from the state, saying, you know, come on, guys, we got to do something with this section of road. I mean, I, when I come up over Milton Mills Road, up by the cemetery past Nass's, come up the hill, there's a piece of hardtop that sticks up, and I hit that every time, going up the hill. And, I mean, it, how I haven't broken springs, I don't know, I got to crawl through there. I feel silly, but I'm, I'm just crawling up through there. And, and it's costing us a lot of money, because I'm not plowing snow, I'm melting snow, because the road is so out of shape. So, at some point, whether or not, we can put a bug in the area, and maybe show that there's some concern down here. Because obviously, the guys from the state, when I talked to them, they had no idea what I was talking about.
Yeah.
So, if we can possibly maybe write a letter, put a little fire underneath the tail end a little bit, and see if maybe they can add it, put some money there in that little section or not. And plus, I got a big bridge report from the state of New Hampshire, sent to me by Teresa over in Wakefield. I actually got a call from Mike Gingers over to the Wakefield Bond, and I went over and seen him, and we, we talked about it. And we're going to meet at some point in the spring when the snow's gone, and see what we can do, some sort of joint adventure of, you know, doing some maintenance on each side of it. But I'm, I like to contact Teresa Williams, she's the town manager over there, and see-
This bridge is located where?
Canal Road.
Okay, Canal Road.
Canal Road, yeah. Yeah, the only one we have with Wakefield that we take care of. And see whether or not, who's responsible for what. There's a, there's an issue now where they, they tried to make it historical. So, now, we've got to see whether or not we're allowed to do anything. So, I'm going to go talk to Teresa, see if she has any insight on it. Pam Judge, I know she was the one heading that whole thing, whether or not she has any insight on it. But the, have you seen the bridge report?
No.
Yeah, well, I'll give you it. Am I going to copy anyways?
That's what, that's a 6,000 pound limit, I think, now on that?
Three ton, yeah.
Yeah, 6,000.
One thing that they did note on it there, there was a sign missing. It was there, but it is now gone, so I had to replace the tonnage sign up there. So, I will be making another sign order here, probably at the end of the week anyways. So, that'll, because I don't believe I have one. So, plus, what we're going to end up having to do is, I've been meaning to do it, it just kind of slipped my mind, but the problem we're having is people, we've got a posted road limit sign out towards Young's Ridge, on New Bridge. But the problem is, they see that sign, they keep going, and then they end up banging a left on to Canal Road before they know it, they can't turn around. So, they end up going over. So, I'm going to put another sign up further up, you know, with the actual tonnage on it, so that we don't have that issue anymore. So, at this point, I'm going to contact them, see who's responsible for what. And Mike's a pretty good guy. I spent probably an hour with him the other day over there, and, you know, he believes that we can, we can do something together there, and at least improve the situation we have at hand right now. So, and I did meet with the insurance guy, what's his name?
Lance.
Lance, yeah, Lance. We did block the shut-off. He was happy about that. So, we blocked the existing shut-off. I might as well go to the salt sand right now. I do have a permit this time in hand. So, Jen got it for me the other day, and we were hoping to do it, start on it this week, but with the weather there, we just don't want to start in, and then, you know, when we get the base blocks down. Last time we put it up, we put it up, it was kind of sketchy with the ground being frozen, this and that. So, we're trying to find a couple of good days where the weather's going to, you know, be, be ideal for us. So, on that, I-
The idea of road postings?
Yes, I was going to mention that. I've been getting some phone calls, and with these days that, you know, like, I think Thursday, it's supposed to be 56 degrees. You know, we don't have a whole lot of logging that I see going around, and that I can find anyways. I'm sure they'll pop up. But I'm looking at right now, the middle of next week. I believe, I gotta, I'm going to call Scott, see what his idea is, but at the latest, it'll be the middle of next week, because if we, if you look at the, the temperatures right along, every night it does freeze, but it is above freezing all day. So, when we start getting running water, then we're, something will be concerned.
I see Milton's already posted.
Milton posted almost a month ago.
Yeah.
But that's, that's when we had that real warm spell, and I actually considered doing the same thing, because the frost came out of the ground, at least the first four inches of it. So, but it got cold again, so I held off. So, but I've been telling people that just give me a ring. I think it's builders today called. They're, they have a guy who calls every town to see what, what's up. And I just told them, you know, middle of next week, and give me a call. We try to accommodate, and, okay?
Thank you. Do you have anything else for? Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Okay, Old Business.
The abandoned properties, just kind of leaving on there. There hasn't been, they haven't been able to come to terms with the property owner, so still scheduled for court on Monday, actually, at 2:15.
Okay. With the salt sand, we already, basically, Dave hit on that already. So, foreclosures?
Again, we have until March 9th. As of our last meeting, we still have the three properties that remain unpaid.
Okay. And that is, the breakdown is what, a couple of lots, and one is a home, or?
Um, one home and two pieces of land.
Okay. Okay, hopefully, they'll come in and pay before. Okay, Jim request?
So, last week, we decided that we would table it. Gail, you want to come up? Table it based on some information that you asked me to get. You should have a spreadsheet in front of you, Gail. I've got an extra one for you.
Yes.
If you'd like it.
Oh, sure, thank you.
So, we go back 2012, 2013. So, you can see the expenses on the top line, just for the people at home. So, 2012, 13, the expenses were $4,615. Revenues for that particular year were $3,738. So, there was a loss of $877. The next year was the cold winter that we really had. You can see that revenues and expenses outweighed each other. We had a negative of $2,336. In 2014, 15, the revenues increased. We actually had a profit of $1,687. So, you've got a three-year average there, but it's interesting to look at the 15, 16 numbers, because this is when we started raising the rates.
Right.
Okay, we pretty much doubled them. So, so far, year-to-date, the expenses, and of course, it's been a very warm winter, so we have not spent a lot on oil. The expenses have been $1,055, and revenues are $4,172. So, a combination of the low oil and the increased prices, it seems to be doing a little better.
Yeah, it's doing a lot better.
But it's, you know-
Whether it holds or not, yeah, you could have another, another killer winter and, and drive it down. Do we know how many members? Do we know how many members we have?
Uh, we have the amount of the revenue divided by.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
You did ask me for that, but.
It really doesn't make any difference.
I had a busy week, and I picked and chose, and that didn't make the cut. But your numbers did.
It's the important part. So basically, the three-year average is a $509 loss over the three years.
Right, and that doesn't include the 15, 16.
Right, right, so. So it almost pays for itself. But that, like you say, after we update, it may.
This, right, we don't have, we only got one year.
Yeah, yeah.
To compare it to with the new rates.
Right, right, so, okay. That certainly helps.
So, that brings us to, um, brings us to where we left off last week. You guys wanted to see some of that information in regards to the request from Gail. I told you that I knew something must have come up and, and certainly it had with her. She had, we had a little bit of that ice storm, if you remember, and.
Yes.
She was stranded.
I was stranded on my road. So I couldn't, couldn't get up here last week, I apologize for that. It was a little too icy right when this meeting was started. I just first wanted to thank you for taking, looking, having the door looked at and getting that repaired. That's wonderful, because that was an issue of it not staying shut properly. And so, I knew that, I heard from Jennifer that you had attended to that, and that's wonderful.
Yeah, we went over, took a look at it, probably gonna need a new door here in the near future. But, you know, we did get it at least, the alarm company came in and they fixed it, so at least we'll lock and.
Right.
Be a little more secure, so.
Yeah, that's, that's great. So, my request is, we, many, many years ago, when there was a flood in the gym and the flooring had to be ripped out, it was a, it was a pretty nice floor on the other side of the aerobic side. And that floor was ripped out, and it's just been a cement floor for quite a long time. And I didn't know if, with the increased revenues from, from the membership, the membership cost increased, if there was any, any money at all that could possibly be put into putting some matting, rubber matting, or rolled mats, or on the aerobic side of the floor to make it a little bit safer and a little bit more usable. Because it's, I mean, it's okay for doing sit-ups, when people put mats down there and they can do some limited exercises, but if they wanted to really use the room to the full potential that that room could be used for, rubber mats, matting of some sort would be the best flooring, and they'd be safer as well on that side. And I just picked, you know, I, I've searched quite a bit on, I don't, I'm not an expert on, on rubber mats or flooring, or what would be, I know you have to get something really sturdy and, and well-made for that type of use. So I'm not sure if what I've shown, given you is appropriate. It said it was for gyms and suitable for gym flooring. So, it was certainly the best price of anything I found. I, I was able for, I measured the aerobic side was 37 feet by 18 feet 10 inches, which is about a little under 700 square feet. And I priced out the tiles there that you could, you could buy, purchase, be about $400. If you were to kind of under, you know, you can see that it's a, it's a little less than the, than the 697 square feet, it's like 650 square feet. So you don't have to actually, I wouldn't believe you'd have to actually go wall-to-wall with it to make it safe and suitable, and, and you could avoid trip hazards by just putting it on some of the walls and not, you know, track, the walls that we track through, the doorways and stuff. So it was just an idea, I, this was just the best product and price that I came. I just thought maybe it would be something that could be entertained in the future. I, at one point, there was some money, we had had a pancake breakfast and raised some money for gym repairs, I don't know where that, that money ever went, it probably just went in the general fund eventually, or if it was still.
Didn't you purchase something?
Yeah, we did, but I think we had like $300, $400, and we did buy something, but I don't think it came quite to that amount. I know there's, would be very little left.
Double check with the treasurer, but I thought we looked and there was, there wasn't anything left.
Negligible.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I think we need to see what we have for funds available.
Right.
Well, there's definitely no funds in there for this.
Okay, we saw fix a door.
Because this is like $400 for the total cost of the flooring. And, you know, I'm sure I'd be willing to, maybe I could grab a couple of people to do it, I mean, it wouldn't have to be installed by anybody on the town.
Yep, this what, this is locked together, is that what I'm saying here?
Yes, it does lock together.
Okay.
The rolled flooring was quite a bit, it would be at least double.
Yeah.
And the stall mat type, that, I think, I don't know if those are stall mats that are on that other side, or?
I think it is.
I, those are also cost prohibitive.
Yeah, those are almost $100 a piece, I think.
Oh, yes, yes. Even if you could get, I mean, they were, I saw for around $50 a piece for the stall mats, but you're talking over $1,000 anyway.
Yeah.
So it's just not feasible, but this seems like a cost-effective way to make the room more usable and at a, not a huge amount of money, but I just thought maybe you could take it under consideration.
We'll definitely take it under consideration, I mean, we have to kind of look and see what we have for, we'll get through the year here to see what we have for funds.
Right.
In the budget over there, while we really don't have a budget for it, but we have the income from it that goes strictly towards the expenses.
Isn't there a heat budget, though, a heat and light budget that's put in the warrant each year?
Well, it's put in, it's under municipal management, there's line items, but it's not.
Okay.
I mean, you know, there, I mean, for $400, if it's the wish of the board, I'm not encouraging you one way or the other, let's be clear. I'm sure out of, you know, building, maintenance, building, repair, there's a lot of places that you could probably find it if you so chose. But again, you can also table it until next week, when your full board is here, it's your choice.
Yeah, it's, I mean, like I said, I'd love to say, yeah, go ahead and do it, but I think I also want to talk to the treasurer and see.
Right, right. I just appreciate you taking, taking it into consideration, it'd be much appreciated.
Could you, could you divide that out and just tell me how many members there are?
Sure.
What were they?
Even though paid or not, right? I'd say if, including everyone altogether, I would estimate you probably got 125.
125 members, okay.
Probably.
That includes the fire.
Yeah, that's everybody. So I'd say, you know, maybe 40-ish, 40 to 50 are probably paying. But since we've changed the way that they can sign up, they don't have, you know, in the beginning, they didn't have to sign up for the full year.
Right.
They could do three-month increments, so.
Yep. Okay, yeah, we'll go hold the treasurer and just see what's, what's there. And, I mean, we haven't wound down for our fiscal year yet, but, you know, we still have some other expenses out there, but.
Oh, sure.
We can definitely take it in advisement and see what we can do.
Okay. Yeah, and about the door, I know she started to, I hadn't really, I hadn't spoken to the board about the door.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a definite.
Yeah, so American Security came by on Friday, we were able to fix it to the extent that the cards work. But the door, I mean, you need to do something sooner than later.
Yeah, when I went over and checked the door to see what was wrong with it, it is got to flex in places that doors aren't supposed to flex. So it's gonna need some repair work.
There was also, one of our members, Mr. Paul Point, sent me an email, there was a concern with the heat, a couple of the mornings, that didn't appear to be coming on. So, I've gone over and checked it a couple of times, it seems fine now, but need to keep an eye on that as well. And thank you, Paul, for pointing that out because we wouldn't know.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, girl.
Okay, on to new business, RFP for the municipal lobby.
At the last meeting, we could sit in silence for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I know.
At the last meeting, you guys voted to move forward with that particular project. There were some conversations based on some events that have taken place about possibly putting that on the school warrant. This is actually a conversation that the chairman and I had. So we have an RFP that can be drafted, that's ready to be put together, we just need to really have a conversation as a board, and certainly we can do that next week to determine when is the best time, which warrant you want to put that on. I mean, I don't know that it makes a difference, other than it possibly getting done quicker, in order to schedule a walkthrough and, and put all the dates together. I just need you guys to have a conversation to determine what warrant you want to put it on.
What's the pros and cons to, to putting it on the school warrant?
Actually, I'd rather not give an opinion on the pros or cons, since, you know, it, in many eyes, it benefits my office, when it's really a security piece. I mean, I think that the board should be able to have that conversation amongst themselves.
Okay. I don't have a problem putting it on the school, the school warrant. I mean, it probably is something that we should get done sooner rather than later, if the town so wishes that we move forward with this. You know, the security part of it is concerning, and we do need to, to do something there and be fed up a little bit, you know, so. What's your thoughts, Bill? School warrant or our regular warrant?
We can still do the school.
We have time.
Probably best, though.
Yeah. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I moved that, what, how would you write, how would you state that motion?
It's the lobby, be the municipal lobby improvements, I guess.
Okay.
It's the best way to, what to call it?
So what are you looking?
We don't have.
Yeah, so there.
You know the numbers, we're gonna appropriate the funds, or?
Well, we're gonna, you want to just read the RFP out loud and make sure that sounds okay with you?
Go ahead.
The motion would just be to move it forward for the April school warrant.
But you want me to read that?
Oh.
Yeah, either one of you.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Go ahead, Bill.
Town of Acton is seeking a qualified general contractor for a design build with the specifications included. The project will consist of renovations to the current town clerk slash tax collector's office and the creation of a municipal lobby. A successful bidder will have adequate insurances deemed necessary by the town. A mandatory walkthrough will be held on Tuesday, March 15, 2016, at 12 noon. Seal bids will be accepted after that date until 12 noon on Tuesday, March 29, 2016. Project is subject to financial approval at the April 12, 2016 town meeting with an immediate start date. The Board of Selectmen reserve the right to accept or reject any bid.
Okay, now, with this, we don't have a dollar amount to go with it?
No, because, I mean, essentially, we need to, to go out to bid.
Right. Is that gonna give us enough time to go out to bid and? Let's see, project.
Seal bid, yes, because, because similar to how you did it on the, you know, the fire state, or the fire truck, or when you went out to bid for the sand and salt shed, it's gonna be up to, I mean, we know the project, we know that we don't want to spend any more than, we originally said 25,000 was the rough amount, so.
Right.
You know, it can be an up to amount, and it'll never go over that.
Right.
Hopefully the bids come in lower, but.
Yep, I mean, just reading this, you got a walkthrough of, of March 29th, but we have.
The walkthrough's on March 15th.
Oh, March 15th, and the bid's at 29th.
Two weeks from the walkthrough to put together there.
Right.
The code enforcement was gonna do the walkthrough so that he can, you know, kind of tell them what they're looking at, and he knows kind of what's inside which walls and where we're at, so.
But if we do the, so if we open the bids on the, March 29th.
Right, the warrant will already be posted, you're right.
Right, so we do have, we'd have to.
Well, you'd have, I mean, you're gonna have to set.
Add a dollar amount to it.
You have to set in some sort of limit, yeah.
Yeah, and you were thinking?
Well, the, the original, you know, we had, we had one contractor come in and kind of go through it with Ken, and.
Right.
They originally said 20, and they moved it to 25 with the idea of that didn't include any wiring that would need to be done, the computer jacks and so forth that need to be moved.
Right.
Essentially, you're gonna have a little bit of a cost, setting up an office in here for the month of May.
Sure.
I mean, it's a very busy time of year to be working out of a, you know, we haven't told Michael yet that we're gonna take his cable room, so, for the month of May.
Yep.
So, I mean, 25,000 is more than safe.
Okay, okay.
We would hope, if not, then, then the job doesn't, doesn't get done, or we, you know, work around it and we cut things out, but.
Right, okay.
To meet the security pieces, that's what we, that's what was determined by those guys.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Chair. I would ask that the, I would ask that the selectmen put the word "security" or "safety" in the title of this, because it truly is important.
It is.
And I think it'll be a much more honest approach when we go to voters, that this is not just for renovations, to make it modern and more efficient, but it's primarily a safety thing for the, especially for the female clerks and other people who work in the town offices.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess we can, we, we still need a motion to put that on.
So just a, a motion to move it forward to the school warrant?
Move it forward to the school warrant. I mean, with.
Left up the question.
With the, the cap of $25,000.
25K.
Yep. So, can you, do you want to make the motion, Bill? The chair really shouldn't make the motion, so. I guess it's just, it basically would be a motion to.
Move the project forward to the.
Yeah, move the project forward to the school warrant, not to exceed 25K for the improvement of the, improvement of the, the tax collector clerk's office for security reasons. When we write it up, we'll.
So, you need a second?
Sure.
Okay.
Second, okay.
Second.
So moved, all in favor? Great, okay, yeah, we'll move that forward to the school. Okay, budget timeline.
So in your packet, you have FY '17 budget timeline. Michelle left me a note and asked me if the board could please consider filling in some of these dates. So, we have, obviously, number one, special articles, social services were due by January 28th, that's done. You guys voted on 3% increase wages for all the departments moving across. Department budgets are due February 28th, so we want to make sure that we get those in. So from there, we.
26, it says, yeah.
26, sorry, my mistake. Because Warren Finance also needs to start planning.
Correct.
We are looking for the budget workshop day in Saturday, on, in March, on Saturday. So.
What do we have for?
Town, town meeting in Shapley, which is not gonna be good for Michelle, it should be the 12th, so.
Do we think?
Say either the 19th or the 26th. I don't think that she has a preference.
And the Warren Finance ought to have that ahead of time to look over. So we probably should go for the latter date.
Okay.
Of March 26, you said?
Yep.
And we have one member of the Warren Finance here.
And really, I mean, all that's gonna be is the day that we all sit around the big round table, and each department comes in and kind of presents, they're not gonna have a warrant to look at or anything, they're just gonna be looking at the department budgets.
Right, okay.
So, if those are due in by February 26th, it's just a matter of us in-house copying them for.
Sure, getting it out to Warren Finance and, okay. Sure, getting it out to warrant and finance and, okay.
26 of March is what day of the week?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Perfect, like we had last year.
Yes. Yeah, okay, let's, we can, let's plan on 26.
So March 26, 9:00 AM, and we'll put together a schedule for next year, for next year, for next week.
Yes.
Similar to how we've done in the past.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and get that in, we'll get that in, well, once we finish this, we'll get it all over to warrant and finance, too.
Okay, so, next one she has is warrant for selectman approval, warrant for warrant and finance approval, final recommendations, and warrant to be posted. So we've got to kind of go backwards. All right, so, town meeting this year is going to be on Saturday, June 18, because the state, state election, state primary is the second Tuesday of the month. June happens, it starts with a Wednesday, so it looks like our third Saturday.
Yeah.
So June is.
I'm going to get my calendar wrote to you.
Town meeting is June 18. If you want, I mean, now that you've set the Saturday date, Michelle and I can sit down and work on the other ones and present you a draft next week. It's going to be difficult, difficult to do right on the spot. We'll need to count backwards and make sure everything's posted for the right amount of time, and make sure that Warren and Finance has plenty of time, so.
Is the 18th a drop-dead date?
Town meeting is the 18th.
It can't be moved to the 25th? I'm just asking.
It's not my decision.
Okay.
I will tell you that.
I mean, there must be a reason why it's the 18th?
It is always the Saturday following the June election.
Okay.
This, always. I mean, and the state set the June 14 election, so I can't mess with that.
Yep.
Always been the Saturday after.
Okay.
But certainly, you know, if you want me to, I can look to see if it can be changed.
No, I will not be here for that date.
For town meeting.
For town meeting. I've got a commitment in Michigan that I have to be at. That was set over a year ago. Okay, nope, if it's going to be the 18th, it'll be the 18th.
I mean, I can look into it, you know, it can possibly be changed. We've just never done it that way. It's.
Yeah, no, it's, it has to be, I mean, we get, closest to the election day is, I'm sure, the best, and.
Well, it's because it's an open warrant, you know.
Right.
We started when we opened the polls.
Yep.
We recessed it.
Yeah, to keep it open two weeks is going to be, you know, not a good idea, so, okay. Nope, we'll set it for the 18th.
Okay, so in regards to the other date, can we come back to you next week with filling those in, when Michelle and I can sit down and talk warrant and finance as well?
Yep.
Is that okay with you, Bill? We kind of, if we can have a little time, Michelle and I, to get back to you on these middle dates.
Yeah.
Once we meet with Warren and Finance and see what's good for them.
Yep.
Sounds good. Yep, great, thank you. Portland Water District, whatever would they want?
Can't imagine why they're on the agenda.
I don't know.
Um, we have a resident, Brian.
Hi, yes.
I don't want to get the last name wrong, but Mr. Cochran, I believe.
Yep, Cochran, yes.
That works for the Portland Water District, and he, the Water District came across a variety of digital equipment that they were going to dispose of. Everything from, you know, cameras to certain types of circuit boards to just a lot of technical stuff that I will probably butcher the name on, so we're going to go with just IT stuff. He came to us a couple of weeks ago and asked if it was anything that the town would be interested in. So I.
Buying or?
Donating.
Donating.
So I turned to our department head, Mike Corey, and asked him if it was something that he was interested in. It was free, it was just a donation, and he said certainly he would love to look through it, and if there was anything left, the school could probably use it as well. So it happened fairly quickly because they needed, they really wanted to move it. I mean, they didn't want to hold it, they wanted to move it. So I did speak to the chair to make sure it was okay, once I spoke to the department head, and the letter you have here is just a quick letter, hoping you could read out loud to thank him for that donation.
Okay, so we have already accepted it? We don't need to vote on that or anything?
Yeah, we, we accepted it.
Okay, great, okay.
But they wanted something in writing.
Sure, sure. This letter is coming from the Town of Acton, February 18, 2016, the Portland Water District. On behalf of the Town of Acton, thank you for your generous offer of the used video equipment, as discussed with Brian Cochran. The town appreciates Mr. Cochran sharing this information with us. After dialogue with our cable and school department heads, it is clear that the Town of Acton can benefit from this equipment. Please consider this letter an official acceptance of said used video equipment as is. In closing, thank you again for your generous, for your generosity. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me directly. It's signed by Jennifer Rue, Town Clerk, Office Manager. I think that's great, that's.
Yeah, that's really nice.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great donation to have. I'm sure, I'm sure there'd be something in there that would be used.
Yeah, Mike, I mean, you know, he's techie like that, so he was excited. They were having their IT moment.
Yeah, and maybe it might be something in there the Fire Department could use as well. I mean, they, you know, for the training room and whatnot, so.
Yep, I'll certainly pass it along.
Thoughts, you know, to see, yeah, that's great.
Good.
Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance.
Just a quick email, want to run by you as the selectman. They have requested that we add the Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance website to our list of useful links on the town's homepage.
Okay, yeah, not a problem. Good.
Bill, you good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Rabies Clinic.
So, I just want to know that I'm considering mailing this to everyone left on my warrant list. This is the worst time of year. You don't like foreclosure time. I don't like dog time. Because the dog, the dog licenses are available in October, November, December. They are $6 or $11. You, they expire December 31. They, you get, you get the month of January as a leeway. February 1, by state statute, which Ed read last week, a $25 late fee goes into effect. I cannot waive it. I am not Superwoman. You just got to pay it. Well, here we are now, crawling onto March 1. March 1, according to state statute, that $25 gets turned into a court summons from the animal control officer and a $50 fine.
Wow.
So if you thought they were upset before. So, and I still have three pages of unlicensed dogs. We started the month with probably five. We've had, you know, a dozen or so come in and register it, register their dogs, and another page, page and a half full, there are people that have just moved. And certainly, we would have no idea that you moved and took your dog, or the dog was, was deceased unless you call and tell us. So, we've, we've narrowed it down to three, three pages. On, is it Saturday? What day is it, 28?
That would be Sunday.
Sunday. All right. So on Sunday, February 28, this Sunday, February 28, at the Lebanon Fire Station, there is going to be a rabies clinic. Anybody that doesn't have their dogs licensed at this point, the reason they don't is because they don't have a valid rabies on file. And I understand that it's pricey to go to the vet, and, and, you know, I mean, we're human, too, but unfortunately, we have been able to find this. This is a God-sent Lebanon Fire Station from 9 to 1, $12 per dog. Make sure the dogs are on leashes, cats are in crates. Now, this is where the selectmen can be a little creative. So, this is on a Sunday, that's going to make your next meeting March 1, because we have an extra day. So March 1, you should be signing the, you should be signing the actual warrant. Once you sign that warrant, then it goes, there's straight court summonses. There's no way, I mean, they're issued court summonses, the $50 fee. So the question is, do you want to sign it on that second, basically telling everybody that if you go on Sunday to get the dog, the rabies, you've basically got during the day Tuesday, because at 5:00 we're signing it, or do you want to go until the next week, which is March 9, it would be?
Can, can we legally do that?
It says on or around March 1, the selectmen will sign said warrant. And I'm really considering mailing one of these to everybody that I have left on my list.
It's not a bad idea. I mean, like you say, that's, that's probably the number one.
We have tried calling, we have.
Yeah, I mean, that's the number one reason why people don't register their dogs is.
Right.
It's, it's very costly. It's 40-plus dollars to take your dog to the vet and get a, get a rabies shot. This is $12 per shot, so it's $12 per dog.
And it's unfortunate, because at this point, the dog fee is per dog, it's not per owner, and.
Right.
I still have a couple of owners out there with five or six dogs, and, I mean, you just do not want to see them walk through the front door.
Yeah, yeah.
How often do you have to get shots?
Two years.
Once every three years.
Three years.
Three years?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I guess what I need to know from you was, what date shall I have the warrant prepared for you to sign?
I would say we could have it, if it's okay with you, Bill, by the, is it the 8? Would that be the following, or the 7?
Uh, the 8, yes.
The 8. Have it ready for the 8. So there is a one-week period between the 1st and the 8th to get your dogs in here and get them registered?
And, and just for clarification, can I say, anybody sitting here at home, at March 1, the $50 fee goes into effect with or without the court summons, on state statute?
Yep, yep. Yeah, it's going to cost you another 50, but with, you know, here it is, Lebanon Fire Station, February 28. You can go over there, get, get your rabies vaccine for your dogs, and that'll be that. Sponsored by Branch Equine. The vet is Nicole Millot. So, yep, I would say. Should we take a motion on that?
Sure, because you're signing a warrant, yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to make a motion that we have the warrant ready, the warrant ready on the 8 for the dogs?
I can motion right there. I'll second it.
Okay. So, okay, all in favor? Great, thank you. Deputy CEO Appointment.
Deputy CEO?
Looking to have an appointment for this individual through June 30. It's just the last couple of months. We have a couple of deputies appointed, but unfortunately, according to Code Enforcement, and he did talk to his liaison today, they're not available. And he's got a couple of things electrical-related that some homeowners have taken on the projects rather than master electricians. This particular individual has a electrical background, because the other two are just, they're just not available. He's requesting that this appointment happen through the end of June, 1st of July. He wants to sit down and consult with you regarding who's going to get reappointed and who's really not going to, because, quite honestly, they're really just not using them.
Yep. I think he had money in his budget for?
Well, that's the interesting thing. He, there's $400, and he knows that.
Okay.
So.
So he has a cap. He did, he did call me as well on this, and, you know, the biggest issue is with the electrical side.
Right.
He's, he's pretty good covering everything else, but there's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The electrical side has to be done by the state electrical inspector, and as you know, the state of Maine's pretty big, so they're, he's pretty, pretty much tapped out, so. Okay, so we need a motion to.
I move that we appoint Corey Norman as deputy code enforcement officer.
Okay, I'll second it. We've been seconded. All in favor? Great, okay, let's. Good. Any other business or public comment? Anybody got any other things to bring up? No? What's that? We have some public notices here. I think we read some of these last week, but we'll go again. Town of Acton, public notice, the Acton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 7, 2016, at 7:00 PM for the discussion of a proposed change to the Acton zoning ordinance related to resource protection exceptions. It's going to be held at the Acton Town Hall, 35 H Road, Acton, Maine. Further information, please call 636-3497, extension 410. I'll leave the next one to you, Bill.
All right, the Town of Acton caucus notice, Republican Party, Saturday, March 5, 1:30 PM, at the Bedford Middle School, Democratic Party. Sunday, March 6, at 4:00 PM, Acton Town Hall.
Okay. That would be next.
Just a reminder that nomination papers for the three seats, Board of Selectmen Assessor, Overseer of the Poor, Road Commissioner, Northern District, and one school committee member are going to be available on March 18, with a deadline of April 29 to get them back. So it looks like Ted Kryzak, Scott Mooney, and Jeanette Versus' terms are up.
Great, thank you. Next on the list, we have the Deputy Chief openings at the fire station. We read this last week as well. Town of Acton, Maine is seeking applications for two deputy fire chief positions. The deputy fire chiefs are responsible for assisting the fire chief in management of the department's operations and resources, including both fire and emergency medical services programs. This position requires all hazardous response and mitigation activities, in addition to administrative duties requested by the fire chief. Preferred qualifications, no less than four years as a line officer, with progressive increase in responsibilities for supervision. Licensed Maine EMT, so a basic. We prefer to have it at advanced or paramedic, but a basic is more than welcome to apply. Experience in fire prevention and inspection, NFPA certificate is preferred. Good interpersonal communication abilities, customer service philosophy, a valid Maine driver's license, Class B CDL preferred, or the ability to obtain within six months. Experience in assisting fire chief in preparation, in preparing financial budgets, or willingness to learn mechanics of such preparations. Successful, successful candidate will undergo a strength and agility test and a criminal background check. The deputy fire chief reports to the fire chief. Any questions regarding this position, please contact myself, Ed Walsh. I'm this selectman's liaison to the Acton Fire Department. Email, my email is ewalsh@actonmaine.org, or my phone is 603-765-5774. To apply, please submit a letter of interest, resume, and three references. Town of Acton, attention Deputy Chiefs, 35 H Road, Acton, Maine, 04001. The deadline for this is this Friday, February 26, at 3:00 PM. So, thank you very much on that.
Okay. And last but not least, is the winter fun at Hobbs Farm. I can't, what should I say?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that, I, it was in color, and when I photocopied it, it came out bad, sorry. So it's Saturday, February 27, from 1 to 3.
And that's at the Hobbs Farm?
651 Fox's Ridge Road.
Great. Beautiful Acton, Maine.
That's good.
Okay.
I didn't put on there, we're still, I think we've got a couple of weeks left for the lawn care bids.
Yes.
And audit bids, so if anybody needs information on those, we are still accepting it. Everything's on the website.
Or please get ahold of our town clerk. Anything else come before the board? No? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Seconded? All in favor? Thank you very much.